We'll move to item number 11. This is also a public hearing. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. All notices required by law have been provided.
Thank you. This is an amendment to the Unified Development Code for Historic Preservation Review, and we have Mr. Hernandez to report on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. I'm here to present tonight the public review, I'm sorry, public hearing for Historic Preservation Review, Master Case 08-103. This consists of Unified Development Code Amendment 08-003. Previously, the Planning Commission and City Council Economic Development Redevelopment Subcommittee has met regarding the subject matter. Staff along with a Historic Preservation Consultant provided those groups a review of historic resources, also conducted a review of state and national preservation models. The consultant also provided a comparative analysis of historic designation criteria, as well as led a discussion of options available to local jurisdictions in trying to protect identified historic resources. It goes without saying that at this time, there currently is no protection in place for any identified or existing historic or potential historic resources. Following these meetings, staff engaged in a phased approach for historic preservation. Phase one essentially consists of establishing a Historic Preservation Review process. This would involve review of alteration or demolition requests that might impact these historic resources or potential historic resources. We really envisioned this as an interim solution to identify and provide the discretionary review for any potential projects that might impact these resources. During that time, staff would like to engage in the phase two portion of this project. That would consist and allow for a more comprehensive program to be devised that could consist of a formal historic survey of these properties, potentially establishing designation criteria that would qualify a property for designation, as well as consists of a placking program and/or include some financial incentives for property owners. Now, before addressing the proposed code amendments, I'd like to take some time and I'd talk about the two lists that would be included or affected as part of the proposed code amendments. The first one is within the city's general plan. That is part of the open space and conservation element. Specifically, this list includes properties that might have received the National Registry listing, have met criteria to be a state historic landmark, or be listed in the California Register of Historical Resources. There are also other identified city points of historical interest included on that list. Because this document is valley-wide in its scope, it does include some that are within the city's sphere of influence and outside the city limits, for example, the Oak of the Golden Dream, Mentreeville, and some others. This slide just shows you a general view of where some of those sites within the general plan list are in the valley. And the range of those sites is actually pretty interesting. We have commercial sites, residential sites, as well as a natural feature. This slide shows the Saugus Train Station, the Party House, and Beale's Cut, all of which are on that general plan list. Along with the general plan list, a preliminary survey was done as part of the downtown New Hall specific plan. That was included in the environmental impact report. Different sites were identified because the scope of this project was really limited to the New Hall area. Some of those sites that were added were the Canyon Theater Guild, the New Hall Ice Company, American Theater Company, Tom Mix Cottage's, and the Old Jail. This slide just shows a sampling of some of those sites. In total, between these two lists, there's a potential to affect 62 properties within the city. What's before you tonight is a new section for the Unified Development Code. It would establish an administrative review process for historic preservation. It would require that a minor use permit for any alteration or demolition request to those specific sites be required. We also wanted to provide some exceptions to the minor use permit process to really help streamline the process for property owners and assist in any change in tendency and try to expedite that process. Again, we envision that these code amendments for review would be in effect for three years while we come up with a more comprehensive program. We've also included a penalty for unpermitted demolition that could potentially happen, and I'll go into detail on some of those later. Also want to take some time to point out what the code amendments do and what they do not do. The proposed code amendments before you tonight allow for continued use of a property, whether it's residential, commercial, and what they do not do is obligate a property owner. It does not trigger maintenance of that site, it does not trigger repair of the site, or that the property owner make alterations to that site. Essentially, you have some new sections that are being added. Again, these code amendments would apply only to properties listed within the city's general plan list of historic resources, and the second list that's identified in the downtown New Hall specific plan. Staff recommends that no amendments to these lists be made. It really is ideal to keep these lists intact, particularly because the scope of each of those documents, the general plan and the downtown New Hall specific plan, are quite different, and so they identify different properties. We also propose that the vacant sites, where say maybe a former historic site or facility that was built in the early years is no longer visible, be exempt, obviously, from these code amendments. And just administratively, staff would file a statement of proceedings to notify property owners if you so choose to adopt these code amendments. The amendments also identify the approving authority. We want to make that distinction very clear. As usual, applications will be processed by our planning division. We have an architectural consultant on contract with experience and background in Historic Preservation Review who will assist in those project evaluations. And we also wanted to delineate, for renovation or alteration requests, we'd like that authority or decision-making power to be with our Director of Community Development. And any demolition request would automatically trigger a public hearing before the Planning Specific findings are also included as part of the proposed code amendments. For an alteration, a finding will have to be made that the project does not adversely affect the historical significance of the structure, that the project is also consistent with the architectural style of the building, and that the project be compatible with adjacent structures. In evaluating demolition requests, we will ask the applicant actually to submit plans for a replacement structure. The project will then be evaluated against the historical significance of the existing structure. And we also ask that the applicant provide evidence of a financial commitment to build that replacement structure before approving any demolition request. We heard very clearly from property owners as we worked through this proposed code amendments that they wanted a streamlined process, they really wanted something that was easy to understand, and really comprehend what might trigger this Historic Preservation Review and what would not require that review. We provided these exceptions here, which really are somewhat some normal tenant improvements that you might see for any other building or commercial outfit here in the city. Some of those exceptions include just even the repair or replacement of the same kind, type, or texture that really would not affect the historical integrity of the structure. We would allow for carpeting, hardwood tile flooring, counters, countertops, and other similar work. We really would like that to be exempt from this process, to have that streamlined for the property owner. And then specific to some sites on these lists, we also want to exempt temporary motion picture, television, and theater stage sets, knowing that these are intended to be temporary. Much discussion was a proposed penalty for any unpermitted demolition. Staff is recommending that no building, construction, or use permit be allowed for a period of 10 years. During this process, we engaged a number of stakeholder groups, as well as community members, to really offer their suggestions and insight into this process. It has been tried multiple times. We held three stakeholder meetings, December, January, and March. We invited potentially affected property owners, the Old Town New Hall Association, the Historical Society, and quite a few city departments weighed in, as well as assisted in revising the draft versions and refining what's before you tonight. At the Planning Commission meeting on July 15th, the proposed amendments were approved along with two recommendations. The Planning Commission would like to see a fee program paid for by the Community Development Department to essentially offset costs that might be incurred for owner-occupied residences that might be impacted by a project. The Planning Commission also recommended that staff shorten the second phase of Historic Preservation to less than three years. Again, that second phase might consist of a formal survey, establishing designation criteria, potential placking, and financial incentives. The environmental analysis conducted for this project found that a negative declaration had been prepared with no significant impact as a result of just the proposed code amendments. In preparation for the City Council public hearing, a notice was placed in the signal on July 28th. All noticing requirements set forth in UDC have been met, and to date, no written comments or objections have been received. In conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council open the public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and introduce and pass to a second reading an ordinance consisting of Unified Development Code Amendment 08-003, establishing Historic Preservation Review, as well as approve a fee program for owner-occupied residences that might undergo Historic Preservation Review. That concludes staff presentation. I'm available for questions.
Excellent job, Mr. Hernandez. Any questions, staff, at this time? We have about a half a dozen speakers.
Yeah, I'd love to hear those.
Okay, we'll move over to the speakers. Our first speaker will be Mr. Dwayne Hardy, be followed by Mr. Leon Warden, followed by Pat Salator. Mr. Hardy.
Mayor Keller, Councilmembers, Dwayne Hardy, New Hall. As President of the Senior Center Foundation, I was happy to delegate our earlier appeal message to you, and wanted to let you know that the Home Delivered Meals Program can use help, and if people wish to, as Marsha put it, make small donations, they can get us online at scvseniorfoundation.org. On with the program. I'm here tonight as a member of the Friends of Mentreeville, a member of the Santa Clarita Valley Historical Society, and as a member of the Downtown New Hall Redevelopment Committee, speaking on this issue in favor of it, of course. We are here basically to ask you to approve this because we are losing so much of our historic buildings, properties, and other things in Santa Clarita that we just can't afford to keep losing. We are basically giving you three years to come up with some idea of how to create a, an ordinance to put into place permanently to protect these various buildings and things. The review before you tonight, basically, the city will use that as a tool, not necessarily to tell people what they can or can't do with their properties, but to at least look at the properties before they are demolished. We feel that the penalty of 10 years before you can build on a property, if you knock down a historic building, is fair, because a slap on the hand does not do it, and we all know that. 10 years is a good amount of time. It will make people think twice about tearing down something that's historic. The other things mentioned in the review, that it will go to the development manager to look at if there is a property in question. If that decision is not agreed upon by the applicant, it can go to the Planning Commission for additional review, and so on up to the council. So there's plenty of steps that people can go through if they feel that their property is not, or should not, be on the list of those historic properties that you've been given. And the 62 properties that are within the Santa Clarita Valley, we know that those are not all the historic properties available, and there will be more that should be added. And that's what that three-year period is for, and hopefully, you know, with the consultant's assistance, we will come up with something solid that will serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Next speaker is Leon Warden, followed by Pat Salator, followed by Alan Pollak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Warden, current Vice Chair of the Redevelopment Committee, past President of the Historical Society, speaking as an individual. I'd like to first thank the council for recognizing the importance of preserving our history. The idea for this process, after all, was yours, and I want to thank and commend Alex Hernandez for leading a number of very well-attended and sometimes rather boisterous meetings to get us to this point. You know, we all take pride in our safe streets, we take pride in our great schools, we take pride in our volunteerism, you know, coming together as a community to support worthy causes in times of need, and we take pride in a history, you know, that nobody in Southern California can touch. We've got the first gold, the first oil, the earliest western filming, you know the rest. You know, I know you know the rest because you, you know, recognize the value of Santa Clarita history enough to have incorporated it into the plans for New Hall all the way down, you know, since the beginning. So, you know, it was with shock, you know, anger when we all learned that Santa Clarita had received an F grade from the LA Conservancy, an F grade in Historic Preservation. Well, you know, how could that be? Doesn't make sense. But when you think about it, by modern standards, it was true. We don't have a Historic Preservation Officer, we don't have a Historic Preservation Commission, we don't even have a Historic Preservation Ordinance. So, you know, tonight, you're taking a step, you know, a modern approach toward Historic Preservation by putting an ordinance on the books. But let's, you know, take a quick look again at what this ordinance does not do. It does not protect most historic properties in Santa Clarita, only the ones that are already, that have already been identified in the general plan and the downtown New Hall specific plan. It does not stop anyone from using its property. It doesn't stop the Canyon Theater Guild from using an old sheriff substation as a business office. It doesn't stop Manny Santana from turning an old jailhouse into a coffee shop or an ice cream parlor to complement the new library. It doesn't require anyone to, as was noted, doesn't require anyone to keep up his and maintain his historic property. And in most cases, it does not impose new fees. You know, commercial developers already pull a minor use permit or a CUP. There is no additional historic review cost if they're already pulling a permit, and planning and redevelopment recommend waiving fees for the half dozen or so affected residential homeowners. So what does this ordinance do? Well, not a whole heck of a lot, if you really look at it, but for properties deemed historic by the state or the feds, like Manny's jailhouse, and for properties deemed potentially historic by the city, like Heritage Junction, it adds a layer of protection. It adds eyeballs, it makes historic review a checkbox on a remodel or demo permit. You know, it's funny, we identify these properties in the general plan and the redevelopment plans, but there's nothing yet on the code books to do anything about actually preserving them. So please do that and take the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Pat Salator, followed by Alan Pollak.
I'm Pat Salator. I'm Executive Director of the Santa Clarita Valley Historical Society. Since the formation of the city of Santa Clarita, the Historical Society has been trying to get a Historic Preservation Ordinance enacted. I just ran across a list of suggestions for a historic ordinance dated 1988. I was unable to be here for the testimony before the Planning Commission, but I did watch it online. I saw the people who spoke against. I had to wonder if they had read the ordinance, or if they just listened to what somebody said who had not read the ordinance either. Nowhere in the ordinance does it say the words eminent domain or public seizure, and really, old buildings in a place with very few old buildings do need special consideration. We need to protect and preserve those aspects of our community which define a place that so many people have chosen to make their homes. There's no single reason that this is a great place to live. You have to consider the beautiful hills, the arching oaks, even the dry riverbed. It still doesn't take very long to get to a place where it's pretty much the way it was long, long ago. Our community, just like people, is the sum of its experiences. We would not be the community we are without the history that came before us, but most of Santa Clarita's residents are completely unaware that this town has any history before they moved here. With every passing year, more and more of that history has slipped away, much of its disappearance unnoted and unmissed by most of the population, who doesn't even know it was part of our history. But this can all stop now. This temporary ordinance is not perfect. It has a few issues to be worked on. That is why it's temporary. We can tweak and argue fine points, add infinitum, and in doing so, lose even more historic structures and buildings in the process. By passing this temporary ordinance, we have the time to find what we really should be worried about. What are the important structures that have been masquerading as just part of town? Froo's blacksmith shop building is still there, pretending it's just another storefront on Main Street, but what else is missing? Is any part of the original Derrick Saloon hiding in the view? Will we wake up one day to find that antique oil tank above stock lumber just gone? How many more incidents like the Tex Williams House can be considered acceptable loss while everyone argues about the details of an ordinance? And here's another scary idea: Consider the timing. The word is out. If this doesn't pass, how many old buildings will just disappear to avoid being caught when the city finally does come up with a permanent ordinance?
Thank you, Pat. Mr. Alan Pollak, followed by Carol Rock, and our last speaker on this item will be Molly Hudson.
Good evening, Mayor Keller and City Councilmembers. I'm Alan Pollak, President of the Santa Clarita Valley Historical Society and speaking for the society tonight. The Historical Society strongly supports this historic preservation measure, which is under consideration tonight. All across America, cities and towns embrace their historic buildings and protect them with Historic Preservation Ordinances. Santa Clarita should be no exception. We do have a rich and important history to protect, and we should protect it. We owe this to our community today and to our future generations. Our children and grandchildren should have the opportunity to witness firsthand those buildings which have survived from the earliest days of the town, for to do so gives them a feel for history which cannot be gleaned from textbooks. Progress can be a great thing, but to know where we're headed in the future as a community, we need to be aware of where we came from in the past. After its birth in 1876, New Hall was a true Wild West town, complete with saloons, cowboys, miners, oilmen, stagecoaches, gunfights, and range wars. This valley played an important role in the early history of Los Angeles and Southern California, as a transportation corridor linking northern and southern California by stagecoach, rail, and auto, as the birthplace of the oil industry, as the location of the first documented gold discovery in California, as Hollywood's back lot from the earliest days of the movie industry. We're certainly not just a bedroom community of cookie cutter tract homes. We have a history of which we can all be proud. The measure presented to you tonight is essentially a temporary measure, which allows us to immediately protect historic structures identified in our general plan and downtown New Hall specific plan. We cannot afford to lose any more historic buildings in Santa Clarita. If we allow these buildings to go, they're gone forever. The entire community loses if we allow this to happen. There is still work to be done to more accurately identify all the remaining historic structures in Santa Clarita. We certainly may still be missing many historic structures which are not on the current list. As a matter of fact, the Historical Society recently sent a letter to the City Council recommending that they hire a consultant to do a comprehensive survey of every structure and site in the city, so that we may develop a more permanent Historic Preservation Ordinance in the future. But this kind of research is going to require more time. Unfortunately, we may not have more time to save our historic buildings in Santa Clarita. Buildings identified as historic or potentially historic on the current list can be destroyed tomorrow if we do not act now. The Historical Society therefore strongly urges that the City Council adopt this measure as presented tonight. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Carol Rock.
Good evening, Mayor Keller and Councilmembers. I'm Carol Rock. I'm a past President of the Historical Society. I'm Chair of the New Hall Redevelopment Committee's Historic Preservation Subcommittee. I'm a 20-year volunteer who's been teaching kids about history for a long, long time, and I'm also a preservationist. At one point, LA Conservancy called me the only preservationist in Santa Clarita, so I have a distinction. I've been here before. I'm the one that wrote that document that Pat Salator found. It was dated 1988. It was ordinance number four that the city considered, so I'm really hoping that after 20 years, we'll get some victory tonight.
It must have been a junior high paper.
It was, thank you. Bless you, Bob. In that time, in the last 20 years, we've lost an alarming amount of resources. The Hoot Gibson Rodeo Arena and the Benelli Ranch House on the grounds, the Biskaloo's Home, Tex Williams House. We've also lost a lot of people that had anecdotal history. We've lost Jerry Reynolds, we've lost Betty Evans, we've lost Betty Pember. There aren't that many of people around that can tell us the history anymore, and if we don't save some of the resources, we're not going to be able to learn. It's like taking a textbook away from a teacher. This will continue. The attrition and the demolition will continue without the ordinance until we have nothing left. This ordinance just puts the issue on the table, just like if you propose a measure, you have to, you know, move in second, and then you get to discuss it. That's what this does. It gives us a gate that we can go through and start to proceed on this. There are structures on the list. They mentioned there were two lists, the ones from the general plan and the ones in the specific plan. There are some structures that may not be as historic as others, but this ordinance would give us the mechanism to give them a closer look. Some see this as a liability, but preservationists, like all of us that do docent work or volunteer work, see this as an opportunity. Approving this ordinance will tell the citizens of Santa Clarita that history is a priority of the City Council, and will validate the thousands of hours spent by those volunteers I just spoke of at the Historical Society, at Mentreeville, and at Hart Park. There have been hardships claimed by property owners that resulted in the destruction of some historic resources in the past, so that they built a historically designed replacement. I want to remind the council that not one of those historic rebuilds, historic rebuilds, has 100% occupancy rate. If you look around, and some of those that look like old buildings have some empty offices. There's a three-year sunset on this ordinance. Your approval starts the clock on the research, the development of incentives, and there will have to be some sort of incentive for the property owner, and the exploration of adaptive reuse by property owners who will be able to keep their property and their livelihood, as well as preserving historic resources for future generations. We require property owners to get a permit to build a block wall or to install a water heater. Why can't we require people to pull a permit and look at their property if we think it's old and valuable to our community? Please approve this ordinance and add Santa Clarita to the list of thousands of other American cities that respect and preserve their historic structures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Our final speaker will be Molly Hudson.
I feel like the lonely Mohican up here tonight, speaking against the ordinance. I have a problem with the consultant that did this. I'm not against historic preservation. I think it's keen, but I think the Historical Society needs to learn the difference between historic and old. I have a property that the Planning Commission agreed last month shouldn't be on the list, but guess what? When you approve the list, you approve my property on that list as well. When the meeting started, I went to Alex and said, "Alex, why is this property on the list? You know, what historic thing happened here for the benefit of New Hall?" Because it sits right on Market Street. Alex researched it and got back to me and said, "Well, it's on the list because it's old." I said, "Okay, what were the other criteria? You know, old is nice, but there should be more than old." Like I told the Planning Commission, "I'm old too, but that doesn't make me historic, for God's sakes." So she was supposed to use multiple criteria. She didn't. In this particular case, and I have to judge her entire performance based on mine, because my property's the one I know, her only criteria was the fact it was old. When I researched a little bit more myself, I had to laugh. I'm a Realtor here in town, have access to data quick and all these modern things, and found out, she says my property's built in 1913, the assessor says it's built in 1910. Something else that never came up- Something else that never came up in the other meetings, which I knew and kept to myself, was, "There are two houses on this property. Which one's historic? Or are they just old?" That was an address which tells me she never went to the property. She looked at records and said, "Eureka, you know, this one was built in 1910. It must be historic." Well, I'm saying she flunked her job. I give her an F. And I, my personal recommendation is that you go to these potentially historic. I have no qualms with a lot of the historic properties. I think they are integral to our history. But you need somebody to look over that potential historic list from a different set of eyes and evaluate it, because there have got to be more people like me on there that have no business being on there. And yet, when I hear the Historical Society get up, it's all about adding more houses to it. Well, you know what? We ought to be a little bit selective with what's already on it, because some of it's wrong, and my property is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. And I might add, she is a very well-respected member of the real estate community out here, has been for a long time. Thank you, Molly. Okay, at that, we have no more public participation. Any questions for Alex by the council?
Yes.
Why don't we go ahead and close the public hearing at this time? There are no objections. Okay, the public, yes, Carl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I need to call your attention to a federal law that was adopted in the year 2000. It's, Congress enacted the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000, in 42 U.S. Code, Sections 2000 CC and following. This act prohibits land use regulations that impose a substantial burden on an exercise of religion unless the government shows that it uses the least restrictive means of furthering a compelling government interest. Now, land use, under the, under this section, this act, rather, a land use regulation imposes a substantial burden if it is burdensome or oppressive to a significantly great extent. And under the act, government agencies may not impose a land use regulation in a manner that imposes a significant restriction or burden on any exercise of religion unless the government can demonstrate that the burden is in furtherance of a compelling government interest, such as historic preservation of property, and secondly, that the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling government interest is utilized. My recommendation to the council is that you include findings in the adoption of this ordinance, that the, if a burden is imposed upon religious institutions in connection with this ordinance, that it is done in furtherance of a compelling government interest, which is historic property preservation, and secondly, that the least restrictive means of furthering that compelling government interest is utilized in this ordinance. I think if you include those findings, then you have a good chance of surviving a challenge.
What section is that, Carl?
Pardon me?
What, what's the code section?
Forty-two, United States Code, Section 2000 CC and following.
Thank you, Carl. I believe, Lori, you want to speak?
So, Carl, then, you're, that applies if there's a church, or cemetery, or...
A religious institution.
Okay, okay. I, I have a couple of questions. Alex, thank you so much. And I, I just want to say thank you for the keepers of the history, the Historical Society. I mean, without your diligence and vigilance, our children don't know what they're, they're losing, and I really, really appreciate that. If I could start with the most recent, if you get on the list, can you get off the list? Are we going to review to, to check accuracy in the process of reviewing to add people to the list?
The two documents, the general plan and the downtown New Hall specific plan, have already been adopted. They included the environmental impact report, as well as the open space and conservation element, which includes the two lists of the properties. Staff's recommendation to keep these lists intact and not pick and choose select properties will maintain the city's liability. It'll lessen the city's liability. If the council chose to select individual properties, that might open up the council as well as staff to liability, because we do not have established criteria. There is no criteria where a property's been designated historic. The resources as part of the downtown New Hall specific plan that are identified as potential were done so because the consultant's report involved research of a various number of resources. One was just specific to Ms. Hodson's property. Others included state listings, others that were of construction date, some evaluated architecture. It was all a preliminary survey. It was not a formal significant survey. A formal significant survey, which we would like to do as part of Phase Two, would essentially clean up some of these issues. It would identify and bring forward to the city council an evaluation for the council to make a determination whether they truly think a property is significant in this community. That level of detailed analysis was not done. I would say that a net was cast pretty wide. I think everyone's kind of in agreement that the lists are not perfect, and staff is certainly willing to concede that. There are other properties that people would like added, and we would hope that the Phase Two, including research of additional sites, as well as evaluating what's on these existing lists, will help clean up and determine what's truly significant for Santa Clarita.
So, so the answer is then, if someone is on the list now, then at the time when an ordinance comes into place, they actually could be removed from the list because the criteria would be...
Established, correct.
Okay, okay. Have, the, the planning commission recommendations, are tho, have those been included, or do we need to...
We have two recommended actions on the agenda report. One would be to approve the ordinance itself, and it's the proposed code amendments before you tonight. The second recommended action would only be to have the community development department offset the cost of any fee for owner-occupied residences that might undergo historic preservation review.
Is there any chance that this could be done in less than three years?
Absolutely. We, that would not be part of the proposed code amendments. That shortening of the next phase would not go into the code. That would just be done administratively, based on direction from the council to staff.
Okay. So, the process during then the next three years of notifying someone if they're being added to the list, I'm, I'm concerned about the unpermitted demolition, to make sure that somebody isn't accidentally demolish a building, I mean, I don't know how you do that, but that is going to wind up on the list. So, will people be added as we go? Or will sites be added as we go, I guess is the...
Site, the way staff envisioned this is a separate item that would make determinations of properties that ultimately make it onto or off of a list as one full agenda item. During that process, we will work with property owners who may be potentially affected, whether they're added or taken off, but during the time that these, or these code amendments are in place, it would apply only to those properties already on our existing lists.
Okay. So, Leanne, we move from an F to maybe a C with this? Yeah, we're getting there? Okay. And then we'll work towards the A. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I just want to say that I think it's 20 years. It's a really long time to get to tonight, but thank you, staff. Ordinance four, and this is whatever number we're on, which is a pretty big number, but, you know, to lose our historic sites and to lose our history would be to deny future generations a legacy and a connectivity to their, their home here that, that we just shouldn't have happened, and is so important for our own identity, for our children in the future, to have that identity then. And we have some of the most unique history anywhere in California. We definitely, in the past and even now, have had a huge impact on, on the development of our state, and I'm very proud of that history. And so, I, I would like to just go ahead and move the recommended action, both Items One and Items Two, as per staff's comment, and then make sure that we have added the federal code section. If Carl would like to recite the number again.
The findings that I recited should be an additional whereas clause in the ordinance.
And add that as an additional whereas clause to, to make sure that we have provided all the benefits for protection of the historic sites and the city in the future.
Thank you, Lorene.
That was a motion.
I, I realize that. I just want to double check with Marcia. Did you have any questions of Alex?
Um, I do. I will go ahead and second that. However, I would like to add that we do include, well, you said it wouldn't be included in there, the planning commission's recommendations. I thought they were good ones. That's just administrative. In other words, to waive the MUP fees and to try to shorten the timeframe.
The second recommended action was a direct planning commission recommendation, and that is now part of the motion on the floor.
Okay. So, it is part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, great. The other thing I wanted to do is, is I know that you have some things listed in here that are not within the city limits, and there's one other thing, and I don't know if we can do it at this particular juncture, or do we have to wait? It's La Puerta, and what that is, is called the Old Door. And back in 1989, and then, and early 90s, when we were fighting the garbage dump in Elsmer Canyon, there was an application, and I have a copy of the application to the state for historical status. However, it couldn't go forward, because at that time, BFI or BKK owned that property, and they were going to build a dump on it and would not give permission. Right now, it's in county ownership, and it was the part of the 400 acres that have been preserved forever. So, it should be a historical landmark, a state historical landmark, and I'm wondering if we can't include that with the approval of the rest of the council in this.
Well, one of the things we can't do is change any of the lists, because then that would cause and trigger the requirement for an EIR. But what, since that's been preserved, we could certainly ask the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to start addressing that as an historic item, and we can ask staff to immediately start adding that to the future list, which will start being aggregated as the study gets progressed through.
It's just then, do we have to wait three years or two years in order to have that happen?
One point to clarify, though, that sites identified on either those two lists, the general plan or the downtown New Hall specific plan, if they are outside of the city limits, the proposed code amendments and money use permit process for that review would not apply to properties outside the city. It's just not within our jurisdiction. As part of the One Valley One Vision, the open space and conservation element is a component of that. And in talking with the senior planner, Jason Smisco, we can discuss about other state landmarks in the Santa Clarita Valley planning area that could be added, La Puerta being one of those.
Okay. Then, then I, I will get you the copy of that application and ask that we, we start that process. It really needs to be done.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second.
Did you have a question?
Well, Mayor.
I'm going to close the public hearing at this time.
Maybe not a question, but a, a comment. It might not be a bad idea to send information to the county about those particular items and ask them to make sure they're doing everything they can before the adoption of One Valley One Vision, to be protecting those sites as well.
Okay.
We don't really have any authority, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
You have quite a few sites.
Pardon me?
You have quite a few sites surrounding the city that need to be addressed.
And we can just generally tell them what we're doing in the city.
And La Puerta, you should also address the Elsmer Canyon historic sites with Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy.
We can do that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We'll call.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Councilmember Leane?
Yes.
Councilmember Ender?
Yes.
Mayor Keller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I just mention one more thing? Ms., Mrs. Hodson, I, I watched the planning commission meeting, and I, I just wanted to clarify. I, I know that they stated then that there was nothing that would preclude her from doing anything to her property by passing this, and I just wanted to clarify that and make, make sure that that is understood.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to unfinished business. Item number 12, Benz Road traffic issues in response to the neighborhood meeting. And, Ms. Striplin, I believe you're going to make a report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. As you are well aware, we have been working on this issue for a few years now. I think it's about five, to be exact. At the June 10th city council meeting, the council directed staff to meet with the neighborhood and those potentially impacted, and returned tonight with a list of physical solutions for your consideration. Additionally, the council directed staff to develop a policy that addresses these type of issues citywide, so that they can be applied and used in other instances as we look at neighborhood issues. While the staff report tonight provides a very comprehensive background and chronology of all the things we have been working on over those five years, my presentation tonight will focus more on the neighborhood meeting that we recently had, as well as the physical solutions that we've identified as a potential resolution per your direction. The council gave staff very specific direction to be creative, and that is being creative and trying to resolve a quality of life issue for the Benz Road residents, while at the same time, not creating a quality of life for all of the other residents. In other words, we're looking to try to resolve a quality of life issue for about 26 residents along Benz Road, but not create a problem for the other roughly 500 residents that live within that neighborhood. Prior to the neighborhood meeting, staff met with various departments within the city and sat down and really tried to brainstorm all of the different types of physical solutions that we could come up with. The result of that meeting was approximately 13 items, which are shown here on the, on the presentation slide. Our traffic division analyzed all of these potential solutions in terms of their applicability to the Benz Road issue. Based on that analysis, those solutions were narrowed down to the four. And as, as you see, the 13 or 14 solutions, the four that I'm talking about are actually highlighted in the, in the red, and I'll talk a little bit about each of those. While my presentation is focused on four of those items, we are certainly happy to discuss the other 11 or nine items that are on the list, or the other physical solutions that we did identify. Before I review the four options, I want to reiterate that there really is no simple solution here tonight. Going into this process, we understood that there would most likely not be a solution that everyone liked, and one that does not create inconvenience to all the residents or other residents. So, before I even start my presentation, I want to apologize upfront, because as unfortunately as I go through this presentation, I am bound to offend someone with one or maybe more of the options that I present tonight. That being said, I will provide an overview of the four options, along with their pros and cons, as well as a summary of the neighborhood's input. And as you can see from the, the showing here tonight, many of the residents that were at the meeting are here tonight, so if I, if I get something a little off, I'm confident that the community will correct me if I'm wrong. So, the first option that we came up with and we presented to the community were speed humps. And what we wanted to do is look at, again, a comprehensive solution that not only dealt with the Benz issue that created an issue elsewhere, so we said, if we're going to look at speed humps, how do we have to plan a speed hump solution so that it deals with the issue, but also doesn't create an issue elsewhere? So, obviously, that meant going beyond Benz with any type of speed hump solution. So, the traffic engineers did a field survey and a circulation analysis, and really looked at, well, if you put speed humps on Benz, where potentially do you divert traffic? So, we have to look at these other different, or these other streets. So, based on that field survey, traffic staff came up with a, a comprehensive speed hump solution, and as you can see behind me, it's probably difficult, but there is a, a, a picture in your, in your handout, that the red dots reflect every place within that neighborhood that a speed hump would be placed. And what we've looked at is anywhere between 20 and 30 speed humps spread amongst Benz Road, Canterwood, Contessa, Fran, excuse me, Franwood, Alaminos, and Kathleen. So, we really wanted to look at it comprehensively and make sure that, as we're looking at speed humps, we create, and we, we address the problem. You know, as, as we look at speed humps and a similar solution to this, you know, you can think back to the Old Orchard One project. You know, we had a lot of complaints about cut through and speed. That pilot project was put in place, and since that's happened, there really haven't been any more complaints from that community coming in and talking about this issue. So, as you look at some of the pros that are involved with speed humps, again, the pilot project that we did demonstrated that you had about a six... pilot project that we did demonstrated that you had about a six mile an hour reduction in speed. You had a, a, you had some deterrence of cut through traffic and some volume reduction. And generally speaking, speed humps are the most widely used traffic calming measure out there. As you look at some of the, the cons, obviously, the first one that comes to mind is the delay to emergency vehicles. Although with the proposal that we have tonight, I think we've dealt at least with the fire department's issues relative to delays for emergency vehicles. There's also an increase in noise level for adjacent residences, and it impacts our transit services and the routes that we currently have in place. A speed hump solution, we feel it's about five thousand dollars per speed hump, would cost approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on what we have here. Generally speaking, and I'll, I'll make a, a quick note about the community's input and then come back and summarize it, I would say of the four items that I'm going to present tonight, speed humps had what I'd say is the, the closest semblance of a consensus among the group that we had, had there that night. I will also say that Benz Road residents were not in favor of this option. So, it's the first, the first, I think, what you'll see as a very much of a division in terms of what certain residents want and what other residents want. The second solution that we have is called a diagonal diverter at Benz and Alaminos. And for a lack of a better description, if you refer to the right-hand corner of your slide or on the presentation here, you see the red, the red strip going diagonally across the intersection. And basically, again, for a lack of better description, is a landscape median that goes diagonally across the intersection, that forces a, a path of travel going up Benz and forces a path of travel going down Benz. So, obviously, as you look at that map and where you, it's diverting traffic, if you're using Benz as a cut through, this no longer really becomes an option at all, because you're then forced to traverse through the neighborhood streets, when it becomes much more of an inconvenience to, to use that as a cut through to Bokeh or Copper Hill. Some of the pros, it prohibits cut through traffic. It will reduce volume on Benz Road, and we think that as part of this solution, you could probably eliminate the peak hour turn restrictions that are currently in place. Some of the cons that we've identified is it increases travel distances for the local residents that live in the neighborhood. It reroutes and delays emergency vehicles. It diverts traffic leading to increased traffic volumes on the other streets. So, you're, you're taking, you're reducing some cut through, but you're also taking a lot of the internal traffic off of Benz and moving it out through all the other, all the other streets. And again, this will interfere with our transit routes. The cost for this solution is about fifty thousand dollars. Community feedback, the Benz Road residents really liked this option. They felt that it was the most efficient and dealt with the issue most effectively. On the other hand, the adjoining streets very much were adamantly opposed to it. Potential solution number three, partial closure, or what's been commonly referred to as Phase Two. This is going back to what was talked about a few years ago, and that is creating the turn restrictions and making those concrete restrictions, so that you physically cannot make left-hand turns and right-hand turns there. So, that, that is what we've talked about in the past, and that was presented as another option. The pros associated with the partial closure, volume reduction on Benz Road, Canterwood, and Buckhorn Lane, it certainly discourages cut through traffic. There's really not an impact to emergency vehicles. You could remove the peak hour turn restrictions. Some of the cons, it limits our local access, again. It diverts traffic leading to increased volumes on the neighboring streets, will require enforcement to be effective, similar to the, the restrictions that we have in place now, and it may lead to illegal U-turns on Copper Hill Drive, so it may create another safety issue when, while dealing with the, the issue at hand. I'll also note that with this solution, as well as solution number four, requires county participation as a portion of the solution is in the county area or county jurisdiction. In terms of the community input, the Benz Road residents were, I, I think, somewhat in favor of this, and again, the adjoining residents were imposed. Item number four is a Copper Hill median plan, and this is basically the installation and construction of a landscape median from Buckhorn to Kathleen Avenue. This basically creates a limitation of left-hand turns from Benz, thus, again, creating a deterrent for cut through traffic. If it, if it's more inconvenient to go make a, a right-hand turn, go all the way up Copper Hill, and then find a place to make a U-turn and come back, the idea is that it creates enough of an inconvenience that you just take David Way and, and stay out of the neighborhoods. Some of the pros with this is it discourages cut through traffic. It's consistent with the city's general plan and ultimate improvements for Copper Hill Drive. So, in other words, as development progresses in that area, this would be an improvement that would be required of the developer. There's minimal impact on emergency vehicles, minimal impact on local access, and again, we think that looking at this, we could probably remove at least one of the peak hour turn restrictions. And some of the cons associated with this is the impact on travel distances for internal traffic, as well as the cost, which is about one point two million dollars. This, this item had what I would call lukewarm or minimal support from the group. You know, people weren't adamantly in favor of it, people weren't adamantly opposed to it. I think, for the most part, people felt that this would have minimal impact, and thus not, not the best solution to, to focus on. So, as we talk about the neighborhood input on this issue, one of the conflicts deals with who is the neighborhood? Is it the twenty-six or so residents that live on Benz Road, or is it the broader neighborhood of residents of about five hundred people that are impacted by whatever decision we make tonight? So, when we talk about who wants what done, we must realize that Benz Road residents want something very different than the rest of the neighborhood, and vice versa. That being said, the neighborhood meeting included about fifty residents, and it was a diverse group from Benz Road as well as many adjoining streets. And like I said, many of them are here tonight, and I want to thank them, because they all came together on a Tuesday or Thursday night, whatever it was, at six o'clock, and spent about two and a half hours with us, talking about this issue. A very civil meeting where neighborhoods, that all of the streets kind of gave their impact, heard, or, excuse me, gave their input, heard from one another. They all treated each other respectfully, although they disagreed in, in what their solutions were. But I thought it was, it was a productive meeting, if nothing less, everyone coming together and hearing what the concerns of one another were. I'd also like to thank Supervisor Antonovich and David Perry, who's here tonight. He was there representing the county, as well as some of the public work staff, so that as, as issues came up that were related to the county, they were able to share and participate in that discussion. So, generally speaking, speed humps appeared to have the most support from the neighborhood as a whole. However, this option was not favored by residents along Benz Road. While the residents on adjoining streets thought this option was a compromise that provided some benefit to everybody, the Benz Road residents felt it would not resolve the issue of cut through traffic, and to some extent, expressed concern that it would actually create a, a worse of an issue than they're currently dealing with now. With this option, the issue of whether the peak hour turn restrictions was, would be eliminated was also discussed. Many in the audience voiced concern that if we were going to implement a speed hump option, that we look at removing those current restrictions. The Benz Road residents felt that the most effective solution was diagonal diverter. To them, this clearly addressed the cut through issue most effectively. However, the residents living on other adjoining streets strongly opposed it. They felt that basically what it would do is it would take a problem that, that may exist now and move it to their streets, because you're taking all of the traffic off one street and diverting it to different areas. So, those streets were very concerned that that would simply move the problem and not resolve the problem. This was generally the sentiment for the additional peak hour turn restrictions, or what was commonly referred to as Phase Two. The median along Copper Hill, as I talked about, had, had minimal support, and again, there were issues raised with the emergency access, as well as the effectiveness of that So, based on the city's review of the workable solutions, and based on the feedback from the neighborhood as a whole, staff proposes a three-step pilot project. Step one, install up to thirty temporary speed humps at the identified locations that you see up there, leaving in place the current turn restrictions. Collect speed and volume data along all affected streets for a period of three months. At that point, at the end of three months, remove the current turn restrictions, and then collect speed and volume data for a period of three months. After that six-month period is over, evaluate all of the data, and then follow up with the neighborhood on the results. If the pilot project is deemed effective, direct staff to develop a permanent plan with speed humps, with or without the turn restrictions, depending on what the data in the, the neighborhood decides. The costs of the speed humps are estimated at about five thousand dollars per speed hump. An assessment district could be established to pay for the installation and future maintenance. That is an option that the council has. It is recommended that the city purchase the temporary speed humps or the speed cushions that are identified in the report for use in the pilot project. If the pilot project is considered successful, and the residents desire to keep them, as part of step three in the process, an assessment district could be formed and a vote taken of the neighborhood. By law, a vote of fifty percent plus one would have to approve of the district and the installation of the speed humps. Also included in the packet tonight is a proposed draft policy for council's consideration. This policy, per the council's request, addresses the criteria and procedures that could be used for speed humps throughout the city. The policy basically states that humps may be used as a, as a traffic calming measure when compared to about eleven criteria that are outlined in the policy. Two of those key issues that I want to point out deal with both traffic volume and cut through traffic, which is one of the things we're talking about tonight. With that, staff's recommendation is that the council authorize the appropriation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from contingency for the installation of the temporary speed cushions for up to thirty locations. That includes Benz Road, Canterwood Drive, Contessa Avenue, Franwood Drive, Alaminos Drive, and Kathleen Avenue, as a pilot program in accordance with the draft policy. Further, direct staff to conduct a six-month evaluation on the effectiveness of this program, and then, based on that, determine what steps to take based on the proposed project. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions at this time? We have about, I'm going to approximate twenty speakers on this side. Forward with our speakers at this time? Okay. Thank you very much, Ken.